We're gonna start our meeting and call to order at six thirty. Yeah, we need to do a roll call first before we start.
Allred. Barber.
Allred is present.
Thank you. Barber. The wall. Vilbus. Aldera.
Yeah.
Kachuk. Kim.
Present.
Kohler.
Reese.
Here.
Quadri.
Yeah.
Solis. Solomon. Robadi. Yeah, Chair, we do have Quorum at this point with ten of thirteen members present.
Hello, everyone. Okay. Okay. This is special considerations. If participating virtually, please mute yourself and not speak. Use the raise hand feature if participants now indicate would like to speak on the agenda item. Remember to unclip or lower your hand out there. Please limit the extenuating use of the chat feature as it can distract board members from the audience. The conference is taking place without the notice either, believe me. Who would participate? This is very important. This is important to me, actually. Let's do it time loud. I get a little rude by saying that bit, just letting you know. Anyone wishing to speak, please raise your hand. After recognition, rest your comments to the chair. Comments must relate to any agenda item. By board rules, audience and board members can have up to two terms begun a copy. Those speaking should emphasize limited comments in two minutes per turn. For two two minutes per turn. Those giving reports will limit their reports to three minutes or five of this presentation. Please silence all electronic device or electronic devices. Notes, the board may take action on any agenda required by the state sunshine law. After maybe two each hour. Specific items not listed in this agenda must be told upon, must properly cover the agenda by three steps. You did roll call? Safety items probably. Fire department here?
Yes, the fire department's here.
Hi, you're on.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. I'm Captain Keith Endo of Engine twenty-nine at the Makali Fire Station. The fire stats for this month of February, for the past February was we had three structure fires, four nuisance fires, and three activated alarms that encompassed no fires. We had a total of one hundred seven medicals that we responded to, and ten vehicle, motor vehicle collisions, and two hazardous material incidents. This month's safety tip is regarding smoke alarm safety tips. So, smoke alarms are, save lives, and are an important part of a home fire escape plan. Properly installed and maintained smoke alarms give occupants early warning to be able to get outside quickly. A couple tidbits with smoke alarms, that smoke alarm should be installed inside each bedroom and outside the sleeping areas, and on every level of the home, and keep smoke alarms away from kitchen or bathroom areas to reduce false alarms. Test all smoke alarms once a month and press the button to ensure the alarm is working. If your smoke alarm is run off of a nine-volt battery, make sure to replace that battery every year, and replace smoke alarm units every ten years or sooner. And that is all I have for the safety tip for the month.
Any questions from the board? Public, anybody who have any questions for the fire department? Thank you very much for coming.
Okay, thank you.
Next, we have the Honolulu Police Department. We'll go with District One first.
Hello, everyone. Lieutenant Segusa representing District One, the community responsibility. Hope everyone is well. I'm gonna go right into the statistical information today. So, motor vehicle thefts for February was three from the previous month, it was four. Burglaries was five, previous month was two. Thefts were seven, previous was nine. U M Vs or car break-ins were five, that's down from ten from the previous month. Assaults were one, previous was four. Sex assaults were one, previous to that was two. Graffiti cases were zero for both months, and then drug offenses was zero for this month, and it was one for the previous month. Total cost for service, just east of Haoli, or west of Haoli Street, is gonna be four hundred and twenty-five, and compared to the previous month of four hundred eighty-one. So, I just wanted to reach out to our community members and just remind them that spring break is closely approaching. And the reason why we're concerned in regards to this is because it's gonna start off with Saint Patrick's Day occurring on that Sunday. So, the Traffic Division and all Patrol Divisions will be conducting roadblocks and road DUI enforcement throughout that weekend into the next weekend. So, you know, arrive alive and don't be drinking and driving. Safety tip for the month of March will be how to prevent U M Vs or car break-ins. We're asking our community members not to leave any valuable, high-value items in plain sight like backpacks, purses, expensive sunglasses, or even loose cash in the vehicle. Always lock your car door, no matter how close you are to the vehicle. I know we sometimes get a little lazy and we just, you know, running into the store or, you know, pumping gas, and then we forget to lock our doors, but please continue to be vigilant and lock your doors. At this point in time, I'm gonna yield back the rest of my time and take any questions from the board members and the public attendees.
I do have one, do have one question. It's all on the new laws that just came out, they voted on. One was for sound in bars, and the other one is for loud motorcycle exhaust systems. How are you guys gonna patrol that? Now, don't get me wrong now, with your windows up, they hear those things, things have to change on that one, don't you think?
Yeah, so in regards to loud boom boxes, we do have a law on the books. It's in regards to loud music coming from vehicular, you know, from vehicles and such. I think the section states that if you can hear this, the music past twenty feet or thirty feet, we can issue a citation. We do have body cams, obviously it has sound also, so we can easily defend it in court. In regards to the loud mufflers, sometimes that is a little bit more difficult because sometimes these loud mufflers are within traffic, it's hard to pick out the particular vehicle. And I think with that, there might be some issue in regards to us having decibel meters in regards to determining what level of sound are we gonna allow at that, you know, with that motor vehicle. But just like I was told several other boards, I think it starts off at the safety check inspection stations in regards to these loud mufflers. They can be easily trained in regards to the decibel meters, they can fail these vehicles and have them return their vehicles back to stock mufflers, or at least something within the parameters of acceptance, yeah.
Anybody else on the board have any questions for the office? Anybody in the audience? Anybody? Thank you very much.
You guys have a great night, thank you.
Next, we have District Seven.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sergeant Ronley Boris. I'm in charge of the day watch Sector One, which is the Makali Moili areas. And for the stats, we have motor vehicle thefts for the month of February. It is eighteen, down nine from twenty-seven. Burglaries, a little up, plus four from six to two from two. Thefts, they're down from fifteen, previously eighteen, and vehicle break-ins are down eighteen from, we're at seventeen from previously thirty-five. Total cost for service was six thousand one hundred thirty-four for that month. And for the safety tips we have from our community policing team is the move over law to remind people that if you see an emergency vehicle, move over, if you can't, at least try to slow down. On that part, we wanna keep everybody safe, keep the accidents to a bare minimum, if at any, zero if we can. And that's all I have for today.
All right, word, anybody? Anybody in the audience already here? Seems good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okey-dokey. Next, we got Board of Water Supply, running up.
Good evening, Chair, Board members, and community members. I'm Stephen Norstrom with the Board of Water Supply. And for the month of February, there are no main breaks to report in the Makali Neighborhood Board District. Our monthly announcement is we are observing World Water Day, and that's on March twenty-second. We've teamed up with the Resilience Office and Department of Environmental Services. This observance recognizes and encourages water users across the globe to make a difference by changing how we use, consume, and manage water in our lives. So, we encourage you to go to our website, boardofwatersupply.com/WorldWaterDay, our social media channels, E N V and Resilience Office's social media channels, to read inspirational stories, watch videos on the global water and sanitation crisis, and find out how climate change impacts our water. And of course, as always, get conservation tips again at boardofwatersupply.com/WorldWaterDay.
Need to come up to the, have to record you.
Hi. Any update on the Navy paying us back for Red Hill stuff?
Yeah, we actually, with the Board of Water Supply, we filed a claim with the Navy. So, we are just waiting, we are giving them six months to respond. I, we do have, I brought it last month, but I'll bring it next month. We do have a flyer that has all the information about that claim. So, if you'd like, I can see you after, I can send you a copy of that claim. Oh, you did? Okay, great. Actually, thank you, Logan. There is a copy you can pick up on the table with more information.
Anybody else? Once twice, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Mike O'Keefe, Mayor's Representative.
Hello, everyone. Mike O'Keefe with the Department of Environmental Services and the Mayor's Rep. Just a quick announcement first, the Mayor's March Newsletter is available online. The website is oneohahu.org/newsletter. I'll also drop that link in the chat. And several follow-up items from the last meeting, five in total. The first one was related to vandalism at Alawai Park. Has vandalism been increasing at Alawai Park? If so, what kinds of vandalisms and by how much? And so, HPD actually responded to this one. Vandalism at Alawai Park has actually decreased. In two thousand twenty-three, there were twelve reported instances of criminal property damage. In two thousand twenty-two, there were thirty reported criminal, reports of criminal property damage. Just a hundred and five percent decrease in this category. Next, this was related to stats provided by HPD. There was a question. It was shared at the February board meeting that the Neighborhood Board Commission and HPD determined the stats that would be provided at Neighborhood Board meetings, for example, motor vehicle thefts, burglaries, thefts, et cetera. Member Lee requested that rather than just the previous month's stats, the stats for the averages over the past year be provided additionally as a better way to understand trends and crime in the area. So, HPD also responded to this one. The statistical report provided to all Oahu Neighborhood Boards was agreed upon by the HPD and the Neighborhood Commission Office to make it consistent among the boards. The statistics by year can be accessed on the HPD's website, onolulupd.org. Once on the website, click on the Info and Resources tab. Select the HPD Data Dashboard on the left menu. Select a statistical category, then use the dropdown menus to choose the time period for the statistical report you would like. The third item from, follow-up from last month, actually a follow-up from a couple of months now. There was a question related to demolition of a structure on Houston Street. The question was, there is a building that is or was being demolished on Houston Street near the Alanaio Stream. Does or did this building have a permit for the demolition? The concern is that the unpermitted demolition work could result in pollutants being released into the environment. So, the City's Department of Planning and Permitting took this one. Based on the information, the question that we submitted, there was not enough information regarding the specific location for them to do an investigation. But if whoever asked that question last month's meeting is here tonight and could provide an address, tax map key or map, or something else to help the department better identify the location, they can look into it. Second to last item, Alanaio Stream Pedestrian Bridge. A couple of months ago, the City's Department of Parks and Rec reported that the pedestrian bridge over the stream was closed and barricaded after being structurally inspected because it was deemed unsafe for public use due to corrosion of the bridge's structural support. However, it was noted, people are still finding ways to cross it, and that presents a safety concern. What can be done to stop or warn people of the safety concern? So, City's Department of Parks and Rec responded that their staff continues to barricade the entryways to the closed wooden bridge over the Alanaio Stream. It's a challenge, they say, as the fencing is frequently torn down by individuals trying to traverse the bridge in the stream. Parks staff is considering a more permanent barricade for the bridge as a solution. Parks will need to propose this as a capital improvement project. A temporary bridge closed sign is currently posted. A project will be made, sorry, a project request will be made for signage stating danger, keep out, and a Parks blue sign stating, "Bridge Closed" for either side. Another request will be made to erect a more permanent chain link fence in the place of, in place of the construction orange fencing. So, last follow-up from the last meeting. Subject of Alawai Park lights, multiple community members raised a concern about the lights being out at Alawai Park along the nearby bike path behind Alawai Elementary School and the Alawai Dog Park. These light poles along Heheva Street are not remaining on long enough or at all. Can the light bulbs be changed and/or brightened? So, Department of Parks also took this one. The area was inspected along the bike path and adjacent to the Alawai Parks Community Gardens, and numerous light poles were not functioning. A recent LED upgrade of the lighting system was performed late last year. Presently, the contractor involved in the project is working with assistance from the Department of Facility Maintenance, Street Lighting Division, on troubleshooting the problems with the lights to resolve the inconsistencies within the lighting system that the area's been experiencing. The contractor inspected and repaired the lights in the week ending February ninth, two thousand twenty-four. So, it sounds like the issue, the situation has been resolved, but Parks will continue to monitor the lights and respond to any further problems that arise. And that's it for my updates from last month, but I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. I do have one quick question. You have one quick question? That's the wall that a bunch of people have been asking about, getting that fixed?
Yes.
You were wondering what the story was with that.
Oh, yeah, so we did, I did get a question from a community member, Karen. She, I got that a couple of days ago, and so I was not able to get a response in time for tonight's meeting, but I'll certainly have an updated response for the April meeting. Sorry about that.
Anybody on the board have any, yes?
Yeah, just a follow-up question to that. Last month, we had stated that the repair was to be worked on, but it doesn't look like that took place. So, I just wanted to follow up again and ask if it's possible to consider making a new access point into the park rather than a very rough wall? And then secondly, with regard to the pedestrian bridge that you mentioned earlier, I've also seen people regularly going around the sign, and they're not actually going around the sign to walk on the bridge that's closed, but they're crossing the stream on a bike that's right next to the bridge. Do you know what that bike is for?
I don't know, but I can try and find out for sure. Yeah, and just to respond to the other item about using the, or converting the section of the damaged wall as a, to an entry point. They did, you know, I'm happy to go back and ask again, I don't think the answer's gonna change, but the Parks, Department of Parks did say that that was evaluated in the past, but they're not gonna go in that direction. They just, they wanna fix it.
You're done? Okay, Laura?
This is on? Okay, yes, thank you, Michael. Two quick things. One, the small pedestrian bridge across the Alanaio, it should be replaced. The Makuli Leagues use it exhaustively, and they block from long distances to get to their playing fields. It's not, it's not a major bridge, it's just a small little footbridge, and it's, you know, something that almost could be brought in by helicopter, and it's not something that you wanna close off the chain link. Also, there are people occasionally fishing there too, and then go in, get to someplace. The second thing is, I don't understand why people couldn't find the location on Houston Street and Alanaio. It's the Makai's side at the very corner of Houston and the Alanaio Stream, and the T M K would be two, seven, X, X, X. I don't know what the rest of it is. It's not difficult to find, if you just bring up what that T M K, you'll know exactly where it is. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Laura. One more time with the location is the Makai side at the corner of?
It's right where it sort of turns the corner and it goes underneath Houston.
Okay. And with regard to the, to the bridge, I don't know, it, Parks is programming a C I P project for it. I definitely don't think that, I'll pass along the recommendation, I don't think that they've ruled out a full bridge replacement, just based on experience. I think the first step in that C I P project will be to conduct a more thorough, like, engineering assessment, and if it is so degraded, then I think they'll just tear it down and replace it. So, I think that that could be in the cards too.
Anybody else have anything for the Mayor's Representative? Yeah, one online. Morgan?
Hello, Mike. I just also wanted to lend my support to the people who want to repair that bridge, because I also find it very useful as someone who lives in that area. Second of all, I was wondering if you might be able to help us invite Sam Moku, who is the new homeless coordinator for the City's Department of Community Services to attend an upcoming Neighborhood Board meeting. I had emailed, or just could send a formal email through the neighbor's office, but was wondering if you could help me put in that request as well.
Sure, I can do that, and that would just be to kind of provide an update on the, on city homeless programs with just homelessness?
That would be great. I'd just love to hear what he's trying to do with his work, and yeah, just give us an update.
Got it.
And I don't know exactly how that gets negotiated or something, but if you need me to work with you directly on that, I'm happy to do so.
Oh, yeah, cool. I think, I think I should be able to get that done.
Okay, thank you.
Easy.
Thank you, Chair. Will the mayor have any more town hall meetings in this area? Because I understand he's gonna have one, I'm not sure where, but will he be having any more? And as an update to get to know the community and the Makali Moili or surrounding areas?
That's a great question, and I'm pulling up the town hall schedule very quickly right now. If you just bear with me.
Sure, thank you.
So, there's eleven town halls on the agenda, and I think the currently planned, I think the plan is also to try to do two more, two more locations. The locations right now are Kaupala, Kaileua, Salt Lake, Wahiwa, Downtown, Manoa, Nanakuli, Waialua, Hawaii Kai, Ha'ula, and Waipio. So, yeah, there's nothing, yeah, nothing super close to this Neighborhood Board, but I can, I can make a plug and see what comes back, for sure.
Because, I appreciate it, because there's a lot more things happening. Thank you.
Sure thing.
Thank you very much. Thanks for coming. Okay, next, we have University of Hawaii. Over here? Okay, we're gonna go fast then. Next, Governor's Representative. Matthew?
Good evening, Chair, members of the board. First of all, I'd like to apologize for not being at the last meeting. I do apologize about that. I just have a couple of updates from the Governor's Office. Some of you may have seen in the news today that the last of the residual fuel has been taken out of Red Hill. So, we're happy about that. The next step is gonna be the Environmental Protection Agency and our State Department of Health are going to be doing inspections of the facility to make sure that all of the fuel has indeed been removed. So, that's the next step on that. The other, the other thing that I wanted to mention is that this week is National Consumer Protection Week, so our Department of Commerce and Consumer Affairs is celebrating this week. We just wanted to make sure that everybody is aware of their rights as consumers. If anybody has a consumer protection issue that they'd like to report, if they feel they're being taken advantage of by a business or something like that, they can call D C C A's Office of Consumer Protection at eight zero eight five eight six two six three zero, and I can put that in the chat afterwards. Or they can send them an email at ocp@dcca.hawaii.gov. And over at the Attorney General's Office, so the Office of Consumer Protection at D C C A is really responsible for looking into matters of individual consumer protection matters. Here at the Department of the Attorney General, we look into the larger things. If there's a lot of people being affected by companies, we can investigate those, and if there are crimes that are being committed, we can prosecute those. So, if anybody has anything that they think we should be taking a look at, feel free to email us at the Attorney General's Office at hawaiag@hawaii.gov. And again, I'll put that in the chat as well. But that's all I have for this month. I'd be happy to take any questions from the members of the board or the public. Thank you.
Anybody on the board have any questions? We have one here.
Hi, good evening. I just wanted to kind of follow up, I'm not sure if you heard what Morgan was requesting from the city, try to get Sam Moku down here. Try to get Sam Moku down here, but would it be possible for us to get a joint city and state with John Mizuno come down and help maybe do a one-two punch with, with the city to address the homeless issues?
Okay, I could certainly get in touch with the governor's office about that. The Office of Homelessness is attached to the governor's office, so I can, I can relay that request. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next. Sorry. Resolution to request a full environment impact statement, EIS, for the Aloei Canal, University Avenue, and Moku Street residential neighborhood site. When you go with, is there a motion to carry this or adopt it, or what do you need to talk about?
Yes, Chair. I'd like to enter this resolution and bring it up for a vote. Okay, yes. Does it need to be read into the record, or since everybody has a copy, that's it?
Yeah, so now that there's a motion, the second can go ahead and present the resolution.
So go ahead and read it.
Yes.
Okay, this is a resolution to request a full EIS for the Aloei Canal and University Avenue and Kalimoku Street residential neighborhood site. Whereas, the facts regarding this site are the Aloei Canal and Promenade and the Miliakoa Canoe are on the Hawaii State and National Registers of Historic Places. The Diamond Head Special District Boundary prohibits excessive building in this site. And the code is 1990 Code, Chapter 21, Article 9, 21930, 35, added by ordinance 9912, ordinance 0337, Exhibit 219.5. Waikiki Special District, 21-983, Exhibit 21-9.13, 21984, B6 Heights and F6F urges human scale. Other ordinances concerning the site, 21910, A flood hazard areas, 21922, major permits, 21920.5, Design Advisory Committee, and the land ordinance zoning map height limit, zero build. Designation of this site indicates that no vertical constructions take place within the site. Have 21-C number three zoning maps. Whereas, an environmental impact statement, EIS, assesses the potential impact of actions significantly affecting the quality of the human environment. This is needed to assure conformity to the regulations at this site. Whereas, the EIS is mandated by federal law for certain projects specifically receiving federal tax dollars. The National Environmental Policy Act of 1969, NEPA, mandate is broader. Federal tax dollars are required to assess the impact of a proposed project on the physical, cultural, historical, and human environments affected by the proposed project. The site EIS is required to assess the cumulative impacts, and it is holistic. Be it resolved, the previous Neighborhood Board Number Eight Resolution suggested that city and county would seriously respect the community's wishes, but that resolution was ignored. Thus, this 2024 resolution urges the city and county to vary full EIS before any further planning or design takes place for this site, which includes the Aloei Canal and Promenade and the two University Avenue and Kalimoku Street residential neighborhood communities. Be it further resolved that the Neighborhood Board Number Eight sends this resolution to the appropriate city and county officials and requests a city and county response in writing and further requests a full EIS for this site. People that are going to be sent to, copies of the resolution will be sent to Mayor Blongiardi, Mike Formby, City and County Managing Director, Roger Morton, City and County Department of Transit Services, Max Callhammer, City and County Department of Transit Services, Laura Thielen, Department of Parks and Recreation, Councilmember Calvin Saye, Councilmember Tommy Waters, Winston Welch, the Neighborhood Board Number Five Chair and Executive Director of Outdoor Circle, Paul Rubati, Neighborhood Board Number Eight Chair, Robert Finley, Neighborhood Number Nine Chair, Monia Freitas, Waikiki Surf Club, Kirsten Faulkner, Executive Director of Historic Hawaii Foundation, Michelle Debuska, Principal, Aloei School, Cindy Lynch, President, President of Protect Our Aloei Watersheads, Michelle Matson, President, Diamond Head State Monument Foundation, Luciano Minerby, Professor Emeritus, Department of Urban and Regional Planning, UHM, Senator Lesihara Jr., and Melissa Bombares, Senator Ihara's Office Manager, and any other parties that need to be notified.
Okay, probably trust Morgan, looking for him.
Hello, Cam Nape here. I live in Michael, Palo. Chair, thanks for having me up. So I looked at the links here, and I don't think that this resolution necessarily accurately conveys what's in these special plans. The Diamond Head Special District Boundary, that goes all the way to the shoreline, but it certainly allows for exceptions. The water, interestingly, the canal itself belongs to the Waikiki Special District Plan. And where the bridge will land, and this is obviously aimed at the Aloei Bridge, despite the absence of the bridge from the resolution. The height limit in that part of Waikiki is 300 feet. So the tower, I think, 110, nowhere near that. I could go on into other details here, but, no, I mean, I'm really, I got to salute the enthusiasm of the small number of people who would like to kill the bridge. But fact is, an environmental assessment was done as required by law. It was a thousand pages long. It addressed every issue in this resolution, and it resulted in a finding of no significant impact. So there, there is no further step that's, that's necessary on all fronts. I would personally not want to see the board adopt this resolution. Thank you.
Yeah, anybody else?
Thank you all for coming tonight. I believe that there was a bit of misstatement that way in the last person that spoke here, and I'm not about to correct those things. First part was simply things that have not been addressed in the draft EA that was put forth by planners or developers, okay? That what the full EIS will do is allow the community to be wholly brought together again in a way that the community will have some kind of voices. For example, we have the paddlers, we have the schoolchildren, parents, and we have the Makouli Leaks, the senior leaks. We, and especially, we have on the weekends, we have absolutely the full use of the park by the Pacific Islanders that come out and have these wonderful gatherings where the kids run all around, and they're just having a great time. So what we're asking for, we're asking for the site. We're not saying anything about any structure of any kind. We're simply saying that what the site is there and how it's being used, that is culturally, socially, historically, you know, educationally, all of the many things that you can think of that make up a community. We would like to have that full EIS done before anything at all takes place. As a matter of fact, this should be done for all community projects that go up, no matter what they are, whether it's for apartment buildings or, or I guess a roadway or anything else, you know, those are all those things that are going on now. This is what, how the community gets to feel right about what's going on in their community. Anyway, so the zero build is established all across the canal, whatever it is. And that means that there should be nothing that goes up the block views. But I will leave it at that because there's a lot more to be said about it. But it's just about, let's have a whole site investigated. Thank you.
Daisy?
Thanks, Chair. The gentleman mentioned that this is an environmental assessment, which is just like an estimate for a job that a carpenter wants to do, work on your house. We want something more concrete, because a full EIS, which really addresses all the impact of the surrounding areas, the construction of the project, also the, if the canal is strong enough to hold such a huge, humongous concrete structure or anything over the canal. Now, if you know, some parts are actually crumbling, and I think they're trying to fix the stairway. So you need to consider all these. These are all impact. Not only that, it's the impact between Waikiki and the neighboring community. Now, if this is, could also be used to bridge the communities and then go all the way up to Moyli, Manoa area. So, I mean, it seems as though Waikiki is over being overbuilt. So they need to have additional areas where the people can go. So I think that anything that goes, structure that goes over the canal is just a way of saying Waikiki needs more room. And guess what? Your community is the one that's being impacted. So this is not, has not been addressed. As I said, EA is only an estimate. You need to get a full total of everything that impacts the community and people that use and stay there, because the residents know they're the ones that are mostly impacted by it, and the people that play, go to school, et cetera. So this really needs a full EIS. Thank you.
Morgan, is this about the resolution or will it be in the discussion portion with more?
Question for Laura.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay. Um, hi, Laura. I just wanted to ask you regarding what this type of process when it comes to getting resident impact, resident impact, excuse me, resident opinions, this would have. And the reason I'm asking that is because obviously there's nothing stopping from residents who have opinions about the bridge from coming to this meeting. So how exactly would there be different efforts, I guess, to get people's opinions beyond what's already available with regards to people sharing their opinion about the bridge?
Thank you, Morgan. We just started out, Senator Ihara and Senator Fukunaga brought us together at Aloei School, and also, I think, there was at Washington Middle School. And people came together, it was quite small presentations, and then people got in groups and spoke about the kinds of concerns that they had and the kinds of concerns that they wanted to have done. Now, this is just, that is basically a start, and it certainly can be expanded further. And if I could say to a member, Rookie Kim, that the EIS should be initiated by a developer or planner, but this was a shortcut that they were doing, as Daisy just mentioned, rather than doing the full EIS. What's happening is the community wants to have a full EIS, which should have been done at the very beginning. I don't know, does that answer that, Morgan, for you? Or, because I think what we need to do is have the next community meeting and sit down, and everybody gets to discuss. And it's also called, in I guess architectural terms, a charrette, where people work on various sides of the situation and try to come to an accommodation or agreement, and then the full EIS can be written out. Does that answer it for you?
Somewhat. I guess a lot of it has to do with kind of like what even publicizing and recruiting for the community would look like. Just because if it's going to have more.
Hundreds of thousands of names that went out, and there were mailouts that went out for those meetings.
So it would be additional kind of publicity for something, is what you're saying?
Yes, yes. And they would, and they would get another flyer or however communicated. And I'm sure if I would prevail on Senator Ihara and Senator Fukunaga, they would be very, very happy to do that facilitator.
For the first environmental assessment, and I'm sorry if I'm using the wrong words, that was done earlier, were there also that same type of outreach and mailings?
Not to my knowledge. I don't know how the first meetings actually took place, because they were initiated by the planners and the developers and the DTS people. And they had fixed plans. They were not really something that the community would sit down and talk about. They had fixed plans, and they had fixed outcomes, so it was not really a true representative of the community.
Okay, final question. Do you have a timetable for when you would want some sort of decision or resolution from these meetings to be made? Are we talking like end of 2024, beginning of 2025?
I think really much, I'm sorry, I think really much sooner. I think, I'm hoping that our board will approve this like they approved previous resolution, and that this would be something that we turn around right away and start getting the team together and really doing some, some concrete facilitation and work and outcome of what we would like as a community.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, two more questions. One, does your question have to do with something new or something that you thought and discovered?
Yeah, just two questions and maybe just start the clarification, because I think that the terminology that's being used is confusing. So that environmental assessment isn't an estimate. It is what is required by the Act, the National Environmental Policy Act that you noted in here. And that was completed with a finding of no significant impact, which is appropriate, I think, for a pedestrian bridge. Because we're thinking of projects that are a pedestrian bridge versus, you know, a nuclear power plant. So spending millions of dollars and, you know, a decade of study to look at impacts that aren't there, I think, isn't very reasonable. Secondly, I mean, I certainly can't support the resolution because it doesn't actually even name a project. It just says you want a full EIS, a request, a full EIS for the Aloei Canal and two streets. So I'm a little confusing to me because who are you, who are you wanting the board to request this from?
Okay, as I said before, this should be done before anything ever starts being planned. Whether it's an apartment building, people I know in the community are going to talk about the apartment building coming up, all of those things should be done before any planning takes place. Okay? What you are conflating is the draft EA, which is a junior version of what actually should be done in the full comprehensive look at a community. And this is only about how we all use the community. It's not about how planners or developers think there was supposed to be a community. We're not talking about something that's a structure right now, because we can go into that in great detail. We're only talking about the actual physical space on the ground and the water. And I think that it will not hurt anything if you are, for example, a planner, and you think that your money is going to be short because of your salary or something like that, because you do it. I don't think that's the legitimate reason for why a community would want to come together and have a good outcome. I just think that we want to do the right thing for all communities. Lahaina's looking at various ways of access roads. Waianae is also looking for an access road. Pearl City is looking for an access road. All of those require the community to come together to talk about, where should it go? How should it be fully utilized as a space as part of the community? Does that make sense to you?
I'm not sure you answered the question on who you want the board to request this from.
This, this would go back to the, all of the people mentioned, which would be specifically DTS, which we would be asking them then to have a full EIS. If it were in the law, that before any project was ever started, that there had to be a full EIS, no matter what, that would be the best way to do it, but we don't have that law particularly.
It is in the law, the environmental assessment did that. So the other thing.
No, no, no. Make sure there's a difference between the draft EA and EIS. Real difference.
Right, the draft EA, which is the draft of the EA that was completed, that had no finding of significant impact. So what you're asking is for that to be repeated again, because that is the first step to fulfill the law. And if it's the same finding, which of course it would be, again, we're talking about a pedestrian bridge.
It's the Fonzie, the uh is a quick solution to do from the draft EA. And it it is normally something that's handed off to Shifty, the State Historic Preservation Division. And they just say, oh, it's not going to, you know, pulverize the canal or something like that. And that, when that is triggered, and it's going to be triggered, I don't know if we cannot have a community come together and have some um better resolution. It will be triggered in forty five days, and then we have to find a way that is actually within the law to be able to stop it. Why should we want to do that as a community? Shouldn't we want to be working in a positive way to say what is the best use of our sites? What is the best use if we need something that goes uh from one neighborhood to another? You know, what is the best use of our tax dollars, which are not even addressed at all in this, which is has to do in any community, anywhere, has to do with security, police officers, um, maintenance, extreme maintenance, uh, uh, comfort, um, building, you know, restrooms and everything. And that goes on into the future that impacts all of our tax dollars. That's the bigger picture that's not there at all now.
Yeah, so I just want to emphasize again, you can't request a full E I S. It's a condition secondary to an EA if there's significant finding. The EA that was drafted, as you mentioned, it is a draft. Um, I was then put out for public input. The according to the city's website now, based on the feedback that they received from the community that was available for public input, they adjusted the design of the bridge and in fact lowered the height of the tower. So you previously stated it was a hundred and eighty B I, which is incorrect now according to their revision based on public feedback. But I just wanted to note that because you have repeatedly said that public feedback has been ignored.
But we could go into this much longer than what we actually need for this particular resolution. They lowered it ten feet, okay? Um, what they did not do is I and many other people wrote to them after every single one of the town hall meetings and said, here are the things that the community should have considered. And we got zero response back. I'm telling you, there was no response back to all of the suggestions that we made, all the comments that we made, and all of the many things that go in to what makes a community. And I, as a member of forty three years, and we have people in the audience that are many more years probably than I, and we know our community and we want the best for the community.
Okay, we're gonna move along here.
Another person?
Yes.
Thank you for an opportunity. I am Luciano Mina, I am speaking for myself. There is a lot of things I'm here that I can say here with me. The city consultant prepared a draft environmental assessment. It was only a draft. We were anticipating no significant impact. So is a draft, it's not finished. Has to receive comments, and many comments have been made by many people submit the testimony, including I did my homework several pages that I provided to the city and the neighborhood board with documentation, photographs, time statistics, etc., that need to be assessed. So the proper things to do is for the city to recognize that the draft environmental the draft environmental assessment was a superficial in saying that they were anticipating no impact. The impact are very many on the Waikiki side, in particular for our community. And this board has to protect our residents and the community. And I made a list of ten issues about the impact of the bridge on the Alawai Park that is used by people, including the migrant nation and so on. I provided the pictures. Pictures that show that already the area is impacted. We have three policemen that the line is full because of congestion of traffic. All that is already written here. So on the basis of this comment by me and then others, the proper things to do for the city was simply to do a full environmental impact assessment because all these um positive and negative impact is sorted out. This is a big project because it is allocated million and million of federal and state dollars to do this bridge. So we deserve to have a good project that look at the impact of the mitigation measure and alternative considered by, for example, including pedestrian and bicycle on on Macalno Street. This draft environmental assessment in a very superficial way is listed that they all these alternative and didn't even consider mitigating measure. I tried to look through the document, for example, if the migrant nation are mentioned, have not mentioned. But we know that two goes over there, holiday people and truckers people, they use the place for their meeting. A village meeting where intergenerational people encounter and get theirs. All that should not be done by me, should be done by by a proper consultant that keep in touch with the community and assess the impact on the elementary school, the president of the school raises the issues about the safety of the kids. And also there is the people's garden, the community garden, there is impact there. You know why? Because they are taking away parking lot. So that they are diminishing the parking lot. So the the area that is heavily used will put the sacred little park, very precious for this community, is impacted negatively with mitigating measure have not considered and the impact is not assessed. So we own to ourselves that, yes, they spend the money to do a full environmental assessment because they are locating million and million dollars for these uh bridge. So it's issues with the bridge and issues with the site. And we are concerned with the site. I would thank you very much. I leave you again.
Take that. Greg? Greg?
Thank you, Chair. Um, appreciate the opportunity to be here and um speak on behalf of uh supporting this resolution. So uh first, for full disclosure, I am the subdistrict two vice chair of the Waikiki Neighborhood Board. And I'm speaking tonight on behalf of myself as an individual who lives in proxy, close proximity to where this build, uh, this bridge is going to be built. So if I'm looking this way, hopefully it's the right direction on the on the Zoom. Uh, it's, it's just towards Diamond Head, uh, and it would be actually in my windows view as it's being built. I live on the Keoneana Keoneana Street, right off of the Alawai. I, I joined a little late, so I didn't hear some of the things that were said earlier, but I know this issue very well. I'm actually trying to get a resolution um addressed also at our board, but for this, for this meeting this evening and just to be succinct. Uh, I do fully support the requirement for the full E I S just because I have fully read the draft EA report, uh, which is very lengthy, and I've evaluated it in a way that's um you know, accurate and in an engineering way, I guess, the way I would in my former career evaluated by its the quality of the report, the the details of the report, the specifics of the report and the requirements of what's in there. The person that was managing this project, I'm just looking down at a piece of paper to make sure I say her name right, is Meredith Sonia. And she's no longer with this project. And when I go through that report and I look at the requirements, the laws of the state, the federal requirements, and everything that I know from going to meetings and speaking on behalf of um concerned owners that come to me and share concerns and other stakeholders, and these stakeholders are the organizations, the historic foundations, the different groups that have been brought up many times by Ms. Ruby. What I see clearly is that this full E I S is needed. It also needs to be done because there's a coordinated effort between the two projects, the flood control issues and the, you know, the construction project there. So that said, I fully support it. I've evaluated it um quite a bit extensively. I hear a lot of misinformation cited. And I think it absolutely needs to be something that your board supports, because if your board doesn't support it, what's going to end up coming, in my opinion, at the end of the road is some kind of litigation. And I don't, I really don't think your board wants to have that to address later, that your board didn't support something that is just common sense. Uh, to me, it's common sense. I support it. I hope you do support it, and I hope you adopt this this evening. Thank you.
Aaron? Aaron, let's see a hand up.
Yes, I'm sorry. I was trying to unmute there. Um, uh, I'm calling in from California. I'm sorry I came in a little late, but I would like to say that I'm in uh, complete agreement with the last two speakers, especially the uh, the gentleman before Greg. Um, I, and I'm sorry I didn't catch his name, but I agree with every statement he made. Um, in addition to the points made by both of them, I would um also offer that uh, the idea that both federal and state money is at stake and has been for a while. That needs to be considered in light of where we are uh with Maui, uh, the state budget and everything else. I think this is a good time to step back and for all the reasons stated in the resolution that um Laura has put together. There are a number of um issues that need to be looked at. And then finally, that have have not all been uh completely looked at. And then finally, I, my personal opinion is that the interaction among this project, the flood control project and the complete streets project has not been adequately addressed. Um, and I haven't really seen a, a, a full way that that those three projects would would interact successfully. So bottom line is I am some in support of this resolution and it it, you know, if nothing else, to get a reply from the city to answer the questions that are raised by it. And thank you for the opportunity.
I call for I'm sure. I agree.
Hello, how good evening. My name is Susan Pimp. And I am a gardener at the Alawai Community Gardens Association. My garden is row C, top zero five. I am completely in support of this resolution because we need to check and find what is going to happen when parts of Waikiki that are not so favorable for other human beings start coming into our gardens. We already have a problem with homeless, break-ins. I personally, in the middle of the day, have been approached by Pimp and Institute, speaking to John Resum. You know, it's, it's really horrible for gardening. Um, and I bet it's gardening that continues. It didn't happen in the outside. So I think it would be great if we could open up doing the in doing this study, if we could at least have more info on the important gardens that we have and the people from the new club and all the people who use. Thank you for having this meeting tonight. Because the homeless, I'm looking for um, they have broken into multiple, they have actually physically moved gardening to the town. Um, I have heard about it, who we and people need the lines in my and it it's small when you have brother mates that you've legal and there is also really when you find so um I would like to see the full environment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you all very much. We got a word discussion going on right now. Anything you'd like to say?
I, I have um something I'd like to say about a word that I'd like removed, and that's in the first be it resolved, the third sentence, the first word ignored. I don't feel like this board ignored anything that Ms. Ruby presented to us. We allowed for the normal time for her to present. We had quite a discussion about it, and I take offense to that. Thank you.
Can I, can I answer that? I don't think she means uh that the board ignored it. I think she means that other people in the city of and much other people, she don't mean that that us this board ignored it.
You'll read the paragraph that says district eight. I would prefer more clarification on that. I would just like to see a different word.
Rookie?
Um, hello, everyone. So I I know that Laura mentioned speaking with me, and we had a spirited exchange over email about this resolution, and um I don't think my views have changed all that much. Um, but in in its current form, I don't support this resolution. And a couple of things that I think are may maybe issues with it. One is sort of that this isn't really the right forum to raise uh concerns about the environmental review process that was used. And I guess the question for Laura is, you know, after the draft, after the EA was finalized, why wasn't that challenged in during the environmental review process? Um, so that's the first objection is sort of this is not the right forum, or it's also too late. I mean, th- this draft EA or the EA was finalized, I think, several years ago now at this point. Um, and and this also ties to what uh Greg Misakian mentioned, which is the prospect of litigation. Um, and, and this also ties to what Greg Misakian mentioned, which is the prospect of litigation. And I'm not an expert on this process, but it's my understanding that. Uh, there are timelines in which you are allowed to challenge through litigation. Specific decisions or, or points in the environmental review process and it feels like we are way past that here. Um, I, I, so I, what I don't understand is why this is coming up now, sort of two, two and a half years after. The um EA was, was finalized. And even assuming the EA, you know, even assuming there's some value in the community. Um, making a request, a symbolic request to redo or, or, you know, to do a full EIS. Um, one problem that I had with the resolution as written is that. Right? What, what's needed in order to uh require an EIS is a finding, or sorry. Uh, um, a finding of significant impact, right? And so my question for Laura and anyone else is. What in the existing uh final EA and, and what in the finding of no significant impact was incorrect? Right? Like what, what is it that? The agencies got wrong? And spell that out so that we can actually understand, you know, what, what went wrong in the process, but. In the resolutions, it stands, it's basically just saying, you know, the community doesn't want this or, you know, um. We need a full EIS, but it doesn't explain what the agency got wrong in the first instance. So those are sort of. My concerns or objections with the resolution as written.
Thank you. Christopher Salas.
Hi, guys. Uh, I just wanted to, I guess, double down on what, what he said. I feel like that summarized pretty much exactly how I was feeling. That's all. Thank you.
Anybody know, know, you know, on the board, no? You being. Yeah, anybody know, know, you know, on the board, no? You being. Right, ready, vote? Yeah. Okay.
So the current motion on the table is to adopt the resolution requesting a full environmental impact statement for the Alowai Canal, University Ave and. Halaipou Street residential neighborhood site. Made by member Barber and seconded by member De Vilbest. All right. Barber. And if you guys could, uh, talk to, to, just for the people online.
I vote in favor of passing the resolution. I.
Thank you. Deval. De Vilbest. Goldair.
No.
Pichuk. Kim.
Nope.
Kolar.
No.
Lee.
No.
Audrey.
Yes.
Salas.
No.
Solomon.
No.
Thank you.
No.
The motion is not adopted with three i's. Eight nays and no abstentions.
Okay. Okay, next we have. Affordable housing development. Affordable housing development at one, two, three, four, Alexander Street. And here come the. Yeah. Five minutes then. Five minutes.
Aloha, everybody. I'm Chris Flaherty with the Kennekeia Development. Um, as my son is trying to pull up. The presentation this evening, I wanted to introduce ourselves. Uh. We are an affordable housing developer. Um, our most recent project is completed right down the road from here at. A hundred and five unit senior project, which is a hundred percent leased out, seniors fifty-five years older. And it's a hundred percent affordable, sixty percent AMI below. With that, as Teagan is looking, we're a family company. We have Patty Barbie and her daughter, Alicia Will. My son, Teagan Flaherty, and then I know a Watson, who our former partner, Kelly Watson's son. Uh, joined us about a year and a half ago. Kelly is now a church. Um, with that, I'm going to introduce Patty Barbie to uh tell a little bit about the background of our development name.
Thanks, Chris. Um. Coincidentally, Oiliili is a special place for me. I'm originally from Molokai. But my uncle lived on Waola Street. And I used to come here every Christmas, every holiday. Uh, kikaida, the iceland, Christmas shopping, everything. This is where. We used to come and I used to pile in my uncle's uh two-bedroom walk-up apartment that my sister lived in, but Moili. And then my brother lives down the street and my daughter lives in. So. You know, I care about this place. I have some history with this place. And I'm native Hawaiian, so our company is guided by Hawaiian values. That's aloha I know. So it's important for us to. To listen to the community, be a part of the community and to fit in the community. And real quick, I can, I can, I can, uh, is a Hawaiian word that was given to our company. Uh. It means to, to take our knowledge that we, and experience that we have and to bring it into life. And that I'm gonna pass it to you.
I think Logan has the um communication out, but I'll just talk a little bit about the thing. Okay, you go. I think three slides. So. Yeah, so um, my name is Alicia Will. I'm a developer associated with the development and I'm going to share. Sorry, I'm trying to get through the five minutes. Alicia Will, we have the Kennekeia Development. I'm going to be talking about combo beauty apartments at twelve thirty-four Alexander Street. One more. So this is the project site. So the site is uh. Is a point five five acre apartment zone parcel. There are currently two residential buildings on the site that contains twenty-eight minutes of market rate rental housing. The plans for this um project calls for a twenty-one story building at a hundred and ninety feet. Height containing a hundred and eighty minutes only. Um, of studios, one bedroom and two bedrooms. In our projects, we incorporate sustainability materials such as a kind of feed gold. We're committed to a hundred percent electric building provided EV charging. Energy syrup finances and solar. This is the ground level uh floor plan. The six-story parking structure will have a hundred and ninety-three parking stalls, which constitutes a parking ratio of a little over one to one. We will also provide sixty-six park, parking, bike parking stalls, two loading zones and EV parking. This level will also have a small landscape out of plaza, a residential lobby and two elevators. Levels two through six are shown here, which has the additional parking and exercise rooms, community resource center and. Above the parking levels, we will have fifteen floors of residential parking. This is a typical floor plan for the residential units above. Here are what the unit layouts will look like. There will be fifteen studios, ninety-one bedrooms and seventeen bedrooms. The units will come with in-unit washer and dryers. As you can, I'm not sure if you can see, but uh the studios are three hundred and seven five square feet, one bedroom for six hundred and fifty square feet. And the two bedroom units are eight hundred and fifty square feet. So good size, too. So here's a rendering of what the building will look like in comparison to the surrounding. One of the key elements we haven't talked about is how uh. It's who are these communities serving? What we're showing on this slide is the. One minute. So we're going to be targeting um thirty to sixty percent AMI as well as the workforce housing. Maybe it's up. So. Um. With this project, we're going to uh type three approaches to get the project finance. So our first priority and what we typically and have always um developed here, what is thirty to sixty percent AMI. Okay, yeah, average, medium income. Oh, sorry. Very immediate. No, area. And then um the next priority is the workforce housing, eighty to a hundred percent AMI, and our last. So here are some examples of the rental ranges for our first two. Thirty to sixty percent AMI and. The workforce housing. So as we move through the environmental review and the two oh one H approval process, we are required to consult with several regulatory agencies. These agencies will be reviewing our projects and making sure that we're negotiating some impacts to the front community during following this instruction for project. Here is our anticipated timeline. We expect to be done with our environmental review by next month. Following this, we hope to receive our two oh one H approval during the summer. We will submit drawings and plans in the next year to receive building permits a year later. Once we receive our building permits, we can start construction and we anticipate in eighteen months, we talk to the council, we'll have us completing the project and leasing up in October twenty seventy-seven. But I know we had to really get through that, so we'll be open to questions and comments.
Questions? Yes. Uh, my question is, I see that April, that's next month, right? Um, so a short time review period, I guess. So. Can you elaborate as to the review period? As to what is the review process to do uh the community members and. And my first question is, is that the Maranal site? So it's behind Maranal? Fine, okay. Anyway, but that was my, my question was about the, what are the details about the, of the review process?
So because we anticipate, we anticipate using state funds that triggers chapter three, four, three. But because it's an affordable housing project, um, we are eligible to vote for the EA exemption. So we've been working with HHFDC and we've um started that process already. So that's why.
Similar to the environmental impact statement? Or is different?
It, it's a part of, it's part of chapter three, four, three. So it does require review by the agencies that were listed. Um, it does require traffic assessment, a phase one KSA.
Is it or not?
It's not the same.
Okay, anybody else with questions? One more.
I want to um. Write my test come on.
What is it? What is it? So um. Is there a public, is there? Will there, when will there be a draft? So what is, what do you mean by the end of the, be the review process? Is that like publication of a environmental assessment? Or is that where is a draft? And then the, when, when do the public, does the public have an opportunity? Because it's, you cannot review it tonight. That's, this is not a presentation.
So part of chapter three, four, three, the environmental review process.
Right.
Because it's a. Affordable housing.
I understand.
Project, there is an exemption.
I understand that.
Exemption process, we go and ask all of those um. Agencies that we listed to comment on our project. And that's the process that we work through with HHFDC. To get the exemption.
Does the NIB board, is the NIB board on the list? Are the condos in the area on the list?
Interesting. So I'm going to do that. Unity of. On Monday night, actually. Where we show them detailed. Power. Questions. Show them. Holding still unfortunately. Five minutes and really like get their presentation.
So I have some specific questions. So are the condos in the area, have they been notified about? Have they, well, they, are they on the list?
Yeah, so.
No, no, no. Do you know the, the list is of those agencies and organizations that have the opportunity. You're going to ask them for our comments. Are you asking the condos in the area and the NIB boards in the area? I assume the elected officials in the area. Are you requesting their comment? And they're either on the list or not. I, but I couldn't read it. It was so fast.
So they're not technically on the. Local agencies, but you solicit comments and doing that. We did pay for it. While.
Right. So could I request? That you send a letter to the condo boards in the area and the NIB boards in the area. A letter requesting their comments and giving them the, a time period. Or giving them materials that they can comment on and then giving them a time period by which they have to get it back because we need to work in, within your timeframe.
Yeah, we can definitely.
Can you, uh? Well, I'm a Senator Lesiara.
Senator, uh, thank you. I believe you, uh, were president, whether it was the Senate or. Actually, John Whalen was our. I'm hoping, oh, yeah, the other one, yeah. Yeah. We're hoping to replicate the same here. One day my son did. We're required to notify within six hundred feet of most uh residents in that area. And we did that. We actually hired a company to send out letters. We didn't get everybody as we learned, it sounds complicated on Monday evening. Um, we didn't get everybody, but we will continue to communicate, take responses. Our email address at ennekeia.com. Um, we received those emails. We've gotten a lot of good feedback, but we're implementing it for the project. So this is on Monday night, we talk about this project, the goal and follow it.
Because it may be a good project, probably is, but it's, it's where, how really, how the community is treated and how they feel respected or not respected. And so I know you're, you, you have your agenda, but if you can speak to their agenda, the communities, and the community wants to be able to say. Hey, we, we, we looked at it and we may whatever you feel about it, but you know, we need houses. So I, 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 that's my focus. So it's not a criticism, just trying to elicit information that could empower the community more.
Absolutely, and we welcome it. For example, the other night, there was a lot of uh. About whether we will be getting out of test, except that, and one of the, one of the challenges with the housing, the management. Comes to us as the owner, we're the owner's project, we'll say, go pass. And we just go along with it, so. But we failed to recognize, and my son and I left us sat and we looked at each other and looked at, someone said. But we failed to recognize, and my son and I, left of us sat and we looked at each other, and we looked at, someone said a very eloquent, said, no pets actually help. I think they're much more, right away, as owners, say, if the management company says no pets, we're like, okay, no pets. But we really don't think about two things. Number one, cannot help us deliver a better product to the individual. And will we have our property taken care of better, right? So, we actually went back to architect the life, did our home construction, any project, the architect, I said, listen, you can incorporate some dog-friendly, pet-friendly items. So those are instances in which we solicit, we back to the community, and that was one that most recently we actually were banking.
Very good. My last question is, is that Alexander Street, is it the street that you go on the freeway?
No, it's actually, uh, Mackay.
Right, and so you go, um, oh, it's Mackay, right? Alright, okay, I got it. Okay, thank you.
Right next to the, to the hospital parking structure. So it's gonna be Diamond Head Side, Mackay at the freeway, right, and it sits right next to the car.
Okay, one last question, okay. Two last questions. Oh, I didn't see where, one second. I didn't see this lady, she's waiting to ask your question. Uh, yeah, so, I, no, sorry.
Ella Kawamoto, I live on sixteen oh five Alexander Street. One for second, four. I'm short in your call, but I got a long voice, okay? So, um, first of all, I got the flyer, but it really wasn't clear. It was, it's just like, oh, this is a housing coming up. Later on, I find out it's right next door to where I live. So that's the one by Alexander and Wilder, right? That's Bingham? No? It's different, isn't it, something different? Right next to where I live. Yeah, I live. Alexander, Wilder, and then I go straight on the freeway. It's Punahoa High School, there's our building, and there's Wilder Street, and the, on two. So you're next to our building, no? Oh, when? I think small now.
Okay.
We presented on that.
Next, uh, next question.
Yeah, simple question. Can you remind me, please, of the size of the studio, the width and the length? Not the total area, the. Uh, but you said the total is fifteen by twenty?
Uh, fifteen by twenty.
It's, it's, it's almost like putting two, um, containers together then. If, usually, you have an idea, eight, eight by twenty. It's like if you were putting two containers one next to each other. Just to get, get you an idea of how it looks like. Thank you.
Okay, next, next. Just a real quick question for you guys. So, we went by super quick, so just a quick circle back. How many, what's the ratio between the thirty-sixty AMI units versus the one hundred, one hundred twenty AMI units about?
So, project. Thirty to sixty percent AMI. No. They're basically mutually exclusive. There's, uh, either or. So, um, the thirty to sixty percent AMI, um, there's thirty percent, well, it's forty percent units, um, additionally to sixty percent. I believe the ratio right now is, uh, ten percent? Yeah. It's, uh, yeah, eighteen units at thirty, eighteen at forty, and a hundred and forty-three at sixty percent AMI.
So just some follow-up questions. Uh, what's the parking per unit looking like?
So, we're at, uh, a ratio of one to one, a little bit over.
And then the last question is, uh, are the residents going to be selected? Who's gonna be able to qualify?
Yeah, so, uh, all the residents, um, you know, in the two different scenarios here, um, as well as the third one. Uh, for the affordable units, they have to qualify under those income levels. So, that qualification process will be, you know, started once we start construction, and we have our management company starting to process applications, and so, uh, all that will be done, uh, you know, prior to project being complete and lease-up starting. And the management company will, uh, have a lottery actually for those people that, uh, put their names in and applications in. Uh, and a waitlist will be started, but, uh, those people must qualify at or below those income levels.
Beyond the income levels, is there also a resident requirement? Like, is this gonna be affordable housing for locals, or is everybody that just qualifies under those financial situations, you have a bar?
Yeah, so, um, you know, there's, uh, the Fair Housing Act where we can't, um, you know, basically exclude somebody from not being in the project. But what we can do, and what we have done, is give preference to people within, uh, specific zip code, um, as well as being, uh, a state resident as well. And so, there's kind of like a, a list of priorities that we do, where we want to attract people that live here. Um, and that's, you know, the people that really need help.
Daisy?
Thank you. Uh, can you clarify the location? Is it Alexander and Bingham Corner? Or is it, um, the other side of the freeway? And also, how tall is this particular building? Because there's several, um, apartment buildings around there, and case, um, Capilani, um, Hospital has a huge, um, complex too. So, I mean, you know, the impact into this area, it's a good project for rentals, but you have to think of the community too. So, is it on Bingham and Alexander? And how tall is it?
Yeah, so, uh, that's correct. And the actual address, the exact address, one, two, three, four, Alexander Street, if you guys would like to look that up. Um, as far as the height goes, uh, we're planning on a building with a height of a hundred and ninety-three feet. Um, and, you know, we do, you know, when we're doing these types of plans, we want to be sensitive to the surrounding neighborhood, um, wanting this specific property and all properties that we develop to fit in with the surrounding community. And, you know, also, there's, you know, a balancing act of trying to provide enough parking where we're not creating negative impact in the surrounding community, where, you know, people, you know, didn't have adequate parking, people could just go and overpark and overcrowd the different streets within the neighborhood. Uh, so, you know, we wanted to make sure that we provided at least one-to-one parking, and we found that in our other, um, projects as well, where we provided only thirty percent parking. We had, um, you know, difficulty filling up those units, um, and, you know, getting people to want to actually live there. And so, you know, there is definitely a push for, uh, reducing the reliance on automobiles. Uh, you know, unfortunately, as we know it right now, the reality is that, you know, people want their cars. And so, we felt like going one-to-one was a fair justification. Um, in doing that, since it's a tight site, we had to go six stories of parking, which increased the height further, uh, to accommodate that parking.
So roughly nineteen to twenty-two stories, maybe. Um, the other thing is, what is the ingress and ingress? Is it all on Alexander Street, or is there a side street?
Yeah, so the ingress and egress is completely on Alexander Street.
Okay, uh, can I mention something? Well, there's two projects. Is there another project going on too?
Yes, uh, we had a town hall meeting on Monday night presenting on two projects. Um, you know, they're, they're very close to each other, but we're only talking about the one on Alexander Street.
So in other words, you have another project similar to this close by? So, I mean, I think maybe the community members and the neighborhood board should be more informed, because it's gonna affect everybody. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, so, we actually had a Manoa, uh, Neighborhood Board meeting presentation for that project last week as well.
I mean, it's John, I gotta reiterate, but, there's, you know, there was a town hall. Longer presentation. Um, you asked earlier, were the neighbors informed? None of the people actually living on the current property that they plan to tear down received a notice. The only reason they knew about it was that neighborhood condos notified them of it. Um, several people who live there, and their building is gonna be torn down, that they cannot afford the rates at the new building that is being proposed. Eagle at the, at the lowest levels, apparently. They brought up the pet thing. I'm not sure if this is a real commitment to allow pets. Just because they're, quote, looking at it doesn't mean it's gonna happen. Um, and that was apparently the only pet-friendly, affordable housing. They said in all time blue, and I'm quoting the resident, but assuming they've been out and had a fine place to live. The traffic on Bingham is already a mess. And Capilani Hospital is there. Anybody who's around during the nursing strike can see what the disco traffic can do. Um, Alexander Street's not any better. Other project is over near, uh, Wilder and Dole around Mariner and Punahoa. So you tell me how this is gonna actually work. I don't see it, and I'm pretty sure they're planning zero setbacks, or close to zero setbacks, to fit that big of a building on a half an acre. Thank you. I have a few points. Well, just to let you know, I'm, I'm, on the EA, I'm gonna be looking carefully at, I, I assume, because of the one-on-one, one parking stall for one unit, which is, is that, that's a little lower than normal, because, like, you're pushing, um, more pedestrian or bicycle friendly. So, uh, so I guess it's, with, uh, aspiration to reality, and if the reality is you can have a lot more cars on, uh, in the parking on the street, then you may have neighbors who park on the street set that, um, they, you know, they didn't know about the project, and, you know, it, it's the, it's the regret after. They, they kick themselves, that they lot, and now they have to park, park one block longer. So to the extent that they know, and, you know, and then the agency have to make the tough decisions. But at least they can take off the table, being, you know, them being upset that the process was. That's my, that's usually the one that really hurts people, and they feel, they may disagree with it, but if they understand it, at least they're fairly favorable about it. And the last thing is, uh, if there is a way actually to, uh, to give preference to those people who are displaced with other, like, uh, our freely place, uh, and other, you know, where they're, they're actually displaced and need to rent, to the extent that people's accommodate, that would be helpful.
Yeah, so, uh, to add to, you know, you really appreciate that, that feedback. Um, you know, we're a very sensitive community. I was here last month telling the neighborhood board about this presentation. I shared the flyer, brought the flyers here. I went to the MTP, uh, Chantelus Neighborhood Board, as well as Manoa, uh, as well as this one. Uh, we sent out letters, not just to the condo owners, uh, or the HOA, but each of the individual residents within four hundred feet of each project. So that was done, but unfortunately, in that process of sending the invitations out to the town hall, you know, it was totally, you know, by mistake. I didn't include the people that were living at one, two, three, four Alexander. I had six hundred or so addresses that I had, that I got and received, and it was totally by mistake and missing, uh, invitation, sending it to those people. And that will not happen again. We need to do better. Uh, you know, we presented at the town hall, we tried ample time, and, you know, feel like we did a pretty good job about explaining, you know, the different details of the project and the process. Um, so we've been working with HHFDC on the EA, uh, and the EIA exemption, and, uh, they've actually informed us that, you know, they're gonna be looking at our projects with a lot more scrutiny now, because of projects that have been passed, um, recently. And so, you know, we're committed to doing what we need to do, um, engaging with discussions with the community like we've been doing, and we continue to do. Um, this is the first of many conversations, uh, that we're gonna be having. Uh, and that's a requirement of the 201H to come and do this neighborhood board presentation. But we wanted to go a step further and do a town hall meeting that, you know, would allow, you know, people to come and meet us, and, you know, it's a larger forum.
I'm glad to, if you are going to send out another, another mail or a map, it'd be nice if you had on the map, this is where you are, and just with the building. That way, people can relate, because when I saw it, I said, oh, okay, they're doing something nearby. And no idea, we're right next door, but we had, okay, this is your area, and it's right there. I'm sure that would hit more people, and then they wouldn't, hi, young man, seeing, there's no first.
Yeah, yeah, I appreciate that.
More clarity in the map.
Okay, thank you very much.
I have one last thing. I welcome anyone, like I said, to reach out to us. We can take you down to meet you at the Hale Makana O Moiliili project, where there's actually people that are living there now. You can ask them about us. We, we're active owners. I show up there, actually parked there, I called over there, because I couldn't find any parking around here. And I asked, can I park there just for this short period of time? I, I know the manager quite well, he's, yeah, sure, sure, no problem, Chris. But if you wanna know about how we manage our properties, how we own the properties, that's a really good, it's in, it's in the neighborhood. You know, so we could, we'd be more than happy to take you over there, interview your folks, and show you what we've done, so, see you this time.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Moving right along, next we have Mayor's Schools, the really, really renovation project.
All right, thanks everyone for the time. Uh, my name's Jeremy Shortzine, I'm at Commandeers Schools. I'm planning and developing, over there. Could end up to speak to you, it's time, let's speak to the, uh, Lion Village, uh, project, that's at the, or at University, Eric Street. Before we get started, like, please, Victor Tran, in the back of the room, he's at Commandeers Schools. And Manny Shigeru, actually, this is a specialist. Uh, sick at home but online, and Richard Chang, he's, uh, asset manager for the area for Commandeers Schools. He'll be acting as the primary contact table who lays on throughout construction and. Let's jump in. We'd like to introduce the founder of Commandeers Schools. That we thought would be event. So, this is Princess Palahi Paki. She was the last, was the last little girl to ascend, and lay on the other first. So she inherited all the lands that they gave, that one inch, uh, turns five thousand square feet. Throughout her lifetime, she witnessed a lot of poverty, badly, loss of plant culture, loss of plant vibration. Also, a loss of quiet people. So, the population, white people, so, sixty-five. Think of the population of right today with one point four million, five hundred and ninety-four thousand people passed away, like, terrible times. But it was through that loss that she became motivated to create and drive, to drive the white people, to go back that fortune, to. She did that by leaving Commandeers Schools, the primary purpose. She took those lands that I just mentioned there, viewed them insect commandeers schools, sole purpose of her day. That's how this today. So seventy-seven thousand plus white children are educated in Commandeers Streets. Seven plus thousand of them, three K three twelve campuses, at thirty-three location. Seven plus thousand, two, and plus one class. In the top right corner, if you're sitting in the back of the room, apology. It's the breakdown of the real estate types, it's zoning, that Commandeers. You can see that ninety-six percent of the land that Commandeers Schools owns is for agriculture or conservation. And only four percent is timber. So the project that I'm presenting today, what we'll do, they'll do that small four percent sliver. And that four percent sliver, the primary use of those properties, create revenue, one. And that 4% sliver, the primary use of those properties, create revenue, wanting. Well, I said, Yainui Nui at Papakea. So Papakea is the greater area, it's like fully sub, area within 103. We'll reference St. Papakea as the area of the school. We'll highlight it in yellow, right inside of the screen, 6.5 acres. If you're not familiar, Papakea directly transverse oral or limestone surface. And the reason for that is the forested cabin system will go to Pucks Alley on the left hand side. That allows water to flow from there. Yainui Nui is the first phase of development, 6.5 acres, highlighted in orange on the left hand side of the screen. First, Yainui Nui, into Rainbow and Falling Park, that's a homage to Crane and Rainforest. So the project itself consists of four buildings. High side of Point Street, about 20,000 square feet of detail. That square footage won't remain the same, we're not adding any square footage, not increasing square footage. We are rediving the interior spaces to be a little bit smaller, able to look at the beach, and it'll be beautifying the exterior. On the opposite side of Point Street, we have, real quick, on the right hand side, that's our barricade plan. We're going to have the students of Commandeers Schools design barricades, the artists about barricades, the live experience. It's like the bulk of the street, we're a little excited about that and hope that you enjoy the outfit, please. I'll breathe through this really quick. The images on the bottom of the screen are inspirational, they're what we're trying to achieve and they'll see like the ground rings right now. That blue area is just their asphalt drive aisle, have the most attractive place to walk. We elevate that. Oh, he's got the flicker. Okay, so the image on the top is existing, the image on the bottom is the rendering of what we designed, the permit, and then there's a key that's a little bit hidden in the top light of the screen showing the perspective of the image. So we can see on the far end of the image, the full height mural that we're going for, that's going to activate the area, the hanging cafe lights, seating with umbrellas, there's a trellis directly next to the limits of the art to see, like shape. And improved aside, a little bit more window around the side. So from the northeast corner, you can see existing on the top, what was, what was designed and what was done, a bottom full height mural. That art will be a complement to the historic area, still being to be. From the east side, again, really trying to create a place that the community feels comfortable, cozy, enjoy, attractive to local shops. Southeast corner. And then this is from the south, east and north. So you can see there's a little hooker on the middle left of the screen, that's a trees way. Apparently that's a exterior square footage, we're blowing that out, adding the left hand side and walk through there to get to the part of the. This is the heart of the retail and almost cafe life. Sorry, closed it off the page, but we met with tenants, we constantly been meeting tenants there, our tenant Ohio, very, you know, white, hard package. So mostly seeing that with them, I can, I mean, we can verify that end of May, as well, without, it's, they've been well aware for some time, there's been many, materials. Construction will start July 2024, 12 months of construction thereafter, tenants will then begin to build up materials, a grand opening screen to some, we'll meet with new folks today, remember, on the board night. No, we're here with 21G Mission, over, virtual crossroads, and then maybe they're going to play with the summer festivals. Royal for you, the summer fest, it's a 10,000 person event that happened, a little bit deeper, a little bit, ask it then. Why do you want? Little final slide. This email address we created for any questions might have, if you think this sound after this meeting, please email with email address, Richard Chang, that's how to ask, respond with myself, we're free to.
Any questions? Questions, my favor will start.
What are the three elements in this project that would create the sense of community?
So that area that was asphalt, it's going to be improved to concrete, much more attractive space to walk through. Creating that full height mural that you saw on the right hand side to bring in local artists, enjoy, the outdoor seating, they think is excessive.
So basically aesthetics and some landscaping.
Correct, yeah, true landscaping.
Those are, those are the elements that you consider are really building elements.
Right, we want to create a place that's attractive, folks want, yeah, feel comfortable, comfortable.
Thank you.
Laura.
Yes, I'm concerned because Elmer Kai did not come this evening, but questions I wanted to ask him, and I hope that you have already asked, namely, what is the likelihood that actual students would come there and settle in in the after hours or whatever? Right now, you have many empty retail spots and that's because either you raised the rents or the leases on them, or they just don't want to be there. And you're going to do something that's fairly large. Also, you are in, you're siloing three different areas that you, as Commandeers Schools owns. The varsity parking lot, which was just called a refresh, we saw the presentation, this area and over on Pucks Alley. And the Pucks Alley people, the people that live on Calo Lane are very concerned that you're going to be blocking with a very tall building. Now, you're siloing these so it won't look like a huge impact, but it's going to with that big tall building. And I, also, you would have to decide what is parking, because parking is limited there. And where is the, where is the community going to benefit? You've sold it before, trying to say that you'll bring in franchises or, or higher end retail, that's not Moiliili, it's not really the students. These are things that you need to ask. I would like to have you come back with Elmer Kai and find out what is the student's need for something in that particular area? Why are they actually coming there? Because you know that Moiliili is a workforce housing neighborhood and that that is not likely, you might find some people, but it's not likely to be the real social hub, community. Further, Maumia Schools owns lots and lots of parcels in Moiliili. It's not obvious to many of you people, but a lot of the people that are the things that are the two, two story walkups and so forth, are all owned by you. Now, you've become not just an educational institution, but rather you're developers. And this concerns us a lot because developers look for money and that means that it's not necessarily serving the community. Your educational facilities, great, fine, keep, yeah, all the things that you're doing, but this is not necessarily for the community. So I would like you, you cannot address it, but you can ask Elmer Kai, please do a study, okay? You must have studies that there's actually a need for putting in all of that at that location. I'm asking him the same question about the supposed college of Ed, and also that would be open to the very same kind of things, places where people can hang out after 4:30 and, and places to eat and retail shops. That just says the big overload in that community. Thank you.
You mentioned a lot of things, I'll try to address all of them. First one comes to mind is you mentioned that. We have no plans for a power, I think something could come, next to the, we have Pucks Alley. So there are some old rendering, I don't know if everyone's aware, there's been a few false starts, going to be developed in this area. I'm just going to move over the current, second false start. Apparently, if there are renderings, we'll probably feel though. But if anything is to come, we'll absolutely come back to the board, hire two or three more. As far as off street parking, I don't think it's heard of. But while he's doing that, the parking lot on the Alka side of Point Street, that currently has a lot of buses, et cetera, that are parked there, those buses are going to relocate to a new place to be determined. Parking lot's going to get refinished, restrike, feel more attractive than it's saved. Folks will be able to park, that'll be public parking, folks park in the lot holder, the Commandeers Schools. To be a care of that, but if I missed anything.
Okay. David?
I'd just like to ask a question. You got plans for the other side of the street where there's FedEx and Thai store and the Lay Flowers, that, that little corner there?
Yeah, so Central Pacific Bank for just that parcel, I believe they have plans.
Because I heard those stores have to shut down, so that, so that's not your property. Okay, thank you. Are you all sending questions?
Interface between transit and the properties that you're developing, all of them. What is the interface? I think you need to come up with a plan of how, if you move around and how things like to change.
We have one person, Kelly?
Yes, thank you. At your, your presentation last night with the Manoa Neighborhood Board, people had asked about permeable surfaces and I was wondering if you would consider putting rain gardens in the parking lots?
Oh, surrounding the parking, and then feet.
Surrounding the parking lot. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Okay. Next, we have legal support for illegal game room action.
Lohan, thank you Chair and lodge your members and all the attendees this evening. Logan, you have the latest slide they sent me with the Florida amended on it, email? And that's a great one, but we can get going with this. So I'm really lucky and fortunate to be a part of this project. This started off because I was speaking with council member, Tyler de Santos TM staff, about what more can be done. I figure, I get sorry while I'm still working. And one of the things that kind of came out of discussion was the need for the community to speak more on this issue of the, I think all across Honolulu, we know that one of the problems facing our communities is health access. And I think it's right to people that feel safe in their community, in their homes. And just talking to your neighborhood, talking to members of the community, very often when these illegal game rooms come up, it's through recent trades have been really headline sort of hot topics. So I want to talk a little bit about what this package can do, the problems we're trying to solve with it and what I think realistically, uh, some of the steps are. In addition to this presentation, we should also have some Q and A and for community asked questions, because I know I only have five minutes, so I might not be able to get through absolutely everything by doing additional materials. We go to the next. So here's the basic problem. Right now, there are about 100 illegal games currently offered. This is more than McDonald's and 7-Eleven's combined on the salad, that's in. This is incredibly more impactful, I would say, because we have 24,000 people living in the city with some sort of movement that they're struggling. And we're one of only five states across the country that don't actually offer any state gambling addiction services to people with this. This is a vulnerable community, will easily be beaten. But it's not just about that. We know that these facilities are also attract other types of crime, including trafficking, loan sharking and violent crimes. One of the big ones that comes up very often is crime to offer, are black market areas with a lot of cash on them that are very volatile. What I hear from officers very often, when this is suspected, when people operate other illegal games, kind of fighting over the earth when they're going. And we know that this unfortunately does. The other thing to keep in mind is, this is a pretty lucrative business where a lot of the people operating these illegal facilities, the FBI has estimated about $80,000 monthly amount that they bring in. Can we go to the next slide, please? Here's the basics to what we think of the solutions. One of the things under the status quo is that landlords are one of the groups that are not necessarily targeted or affiliated as potential stakeholders, we look at trying to prove this. Simply, we do go after people who are investing in this, seize their money, see the assets there. People who are operating it often, you know, might pay some time, obviously charged and arrested, but landlords are basically given a pretty large incentive to look at the other front. One of the other practical things is that we're not maximizing administrative capabilities. If you did half of the things on your legal properties that are done here, you would get fined up to your ears, which is the simple way of, but because these facilities are dangerous to visit, the city officials who define them don't want to go. It's a really simple type of problem that goes on there, so they actually get on. So what would the legal game room package? We'd leverage organizations like the Department of Corporation Council, so they can take your legal action. It also allows the Department of Planning and Permitting to issue fines starting at a thousand dollars a day, up to up to 30,000. I'll personally be advocating the city council can increase that. We got the information that 80,000, if you don't find 30,000, we're not necessarily solving the problem. And then we're also, what this does is allows the Honolulu Police Department to do some of the work of, so some of the measurements and violations are going in, the Code are easily viable and HDB actually supports this to allow them to get trained and just know how to pick out a few of these code violations. And this really wouldn't need to put these government administrators in on this level. We go to the next slide, please? This is especially important for here in urban Honolulu, a part of Honolulu, as I can think about it. You only have to go a few blocks in any direction of where we are right now, not just in our illegal game rooms, the illegal game rooms that have had serious crimes of the, we're talking about shootout, we're talking about homicide and manslaughter, we're talking about overdoses and people who were just allowed to lay in the corner of the room and pass away with no one following the authorities or any principal law. So you don't have to go very far to see, this is a headline through occupancy. One of the things I want to highlight also in this is something that neighbors get afraid of. They're afraid to speak out. I've had to show some of them how you can report some things in the 311 app, so we don't have to necessarily call anyone, honestly. Some of the feedback I'm hearing, too, is they're afraid that when they report it, they're not sure how it might be heard, get out. And so they're afraid to speak out. And I think that kind of comes together for why it's important for neighborhood players to go. We go to the next slide, please. Right now, that we have packaged really simply Bill 57, Bill 58 and the resolution, let's take the time, I'll just focus on the substantive bills. Bill 57 would essentially allow for the Corporation Council and allow DPP to go at them more directly, would allow the way we bring the fines. And Bill 58 would allow HDB coordinating with DPP, get the basic training so they can map some of this to get the ball. Now, let's close out on the comments. What I think's most impactful about this is we spend a lot of time in neighborhood boards talking about fine and cowering pattern. This is a substantive way that we led by neighborhood boards to do something about. In November, I had the honor of working with the Waikai and the Chinatown Neighborhood Boards and myself, I'm chair of the Kipiki Lower Punchbowl Tantuluk's Neighborhood Board. And we brought together another board, chairs and attendants, and started a roundtable discussion of HDB and city council members. In this letter that your board is considering is a byproduct. It's been adopted by the Ala Moana Neighborhood Board, been adopted by, as well, I believe, the Bluey Need reports about to pick it up. And I think it'd be really great and be honored if you would have joined us in this effort. I'm available for questions.
Laura, you were first?
Yes, yes. I believe that you're trying to wipe away the problem, but let's look at it from a different point of view, namely, revenues from gambling would be great for the city and county and for the state. Lotteries do not affect other people that sold at little scripts or sold at grocery stores and things like that. And then even looking towards the casinos, I've been to the And then even looking towards the casinos, I've been to the ones in the greater Seattle area. There's no of the crime criminal element that you're talking about in there. And it's fully revenue rewarding for the native peoples there, but also for the state of Washington. We can have offshore gambling. All of those things will bring in revenue and take the underworld problems that you're suggesting really minimize them and take them away. So I'm thinking, why do you have to put additional police force and everything else on when the other fix is to bring our own revenues in? And to improve an idea that there are people that can gamble if they want?
This is a really good question. You know, I think the impacts that I'm most focused on isn't necessarily. I did spend a little bit of time talking about those gambling addiction services. There's a lot of additional property. I think this is agnostic and it can be considered whether or not the state of Hawaii decides to legalize gambling or not. What we look at is actually in Seattle, one place you mentioned, but also in Las Vegas, they also still have illegal gaming rooms. This is something which crops up around there. People who, after the rest of the casinos close in some areas throughout the same where else, people who want to bet on different types of things. People who want to be able to do drugs or have more access to things like prostitution while they're gambling. These things continue to crop up in those areas as well. And I'm talking about ways we might be able to minimize those funds, whether or not we decide to do a bigger state policy like legalization should now.
Next, Ikaka. Absolutely fantastic. Awesome. Yeah, I'm just curious, so like you mentioned, just within about a half mile of here, half a mile to maybe a quarter mile. There's already been a bunch of busts right here. Recently, we said, well, yeah. But, you know, we're talking about a web, right? So a criminal network that is all intertwined, talking about sex trade, we're talking about drugs, gambling, all that stuff. So is it possible, maybe from this point, for us all to move into a resolution to help support? Not just the attack on the illegal gaming, but also in the sex trafficking that is also within our community. So that's one thing that we all kind of know is around. We drive around KAMO, we just know it's there, but nothing ever seems to happen with it. And they're all intertwined. Someone who works in this world, I can tell you they're intertwined. So is it, whether it's taking it to a council member or something, or say, is it possible for us to elevate that? Maybe join them together and give the authorities that be that they're trying to give the finances to? To be able to attack multiple targets, which all kind of goes into the same clients?
I think that's a fantastic. You know, first off, when we're talking about these sites, what we're talking about is places where people are just kind of allowed to go and do illegal activities. They feel safe enough to do it. When these places are raided, they often reopen. And that's why they're up. Whether or not they originally had intended to just allow them to off the side gambling or after hours drinking. They become magnets for these additional community activities, right? So shutting down these facilities or deferring them could have that sort of potential output, like you put. But I'm glad you brought up sex trafficking, because one of the statistics that really stands out to me most often, we look at the per capita amounts. Why often links highest sex trafficking across the country? And you look at where it happens, immediate surroundings. So we're talking about Brown's Borough of that issue. And I don't know what that would look like yet. I'm not sure if we've wrapped on there. But like, well, I'll tell you right now, if you want to sit down and try to figure this out, if that's members, I'm all for it. I know that minimum, we need to be talking about the community support services and safe places if people want to come out of it. But if you want to go after more, like we're talking about like this, you have the landlords and other things, it's a good place to start.
No questions?
Have you gotten any input or feedback from DPP themselves? They're severely understaffed. We're always bragging on them in the news. It feels like. And so I'm wondering how they feel about taking on this extra layer of potential jurisdiction that you're proposing.
That's really big question. I think it's a really good one. I have definitely reached out to DPP. I tried to include them in the State Roundtable. Funny enough, the exact thing that we think about, they were so understaffed, we didn't have anyone to send during. I think there's two things about it. One, what this letter is about is doing is encouraging the City Council to start moving on. So this would be hearings. When there's hearings, DPP will start responding, get a more substantive response to that. Two, one of the things about it is, the things that DPP is in trouble with is sending staff to confirm these things. It would allow HPD to get that training, to actually do the legwork with DPP. And this is something which HPD is willing and wants to take on. So for the backend administrative end, I'm not exactly sure where that will look like yet. I have been actively urging DPP to be a part of it. And I hope more of that substantively comes out during. Well, you asked if I reached out to DPP, I said yes.
Okay.
Ian, thanks for your presentation. I think you mentioned early on that Hawaii was one of five states that didn't have support service. So is there an element on that front that you could include in the bill package? Because, I mean, I don't see playing poker or, you know, some of the games that happen or that are played in the game rooms as inherently problematic. And rather than criminalizing or adding to the web of crimes that exist. I would be much more interested in addressing some of the root causes. And so I don't know, this bill package doesn't really seem to do that. It seems to rely heavily on criminal enforcement and punishment, and that's concerning to me.
That's a really good question. And I think you'll be happy to know it doesn't add more criminal punishment. I think one thing we've been seeing in the state is elevation from misdemeanor to felony to try to combat illegal gambling. This doesn't work on them. This isn't adding more penalties for people who are working at these facilities, but not adding more penalties if someone were to get caught under repo charges or things like that for the investors. What this specifically does is when a landlord has been informed that there's an illegal game room operating in the facility and you've done all of these violations. And they get that notice, and they start getting fined every day until they close down the illegal game room on their facility, that sort of helps them. It's specifically finding landlords of these properties for knowing and continuing to look at the other. And this is important, when you see the game rooms pop up in the same spot over and over and over again, it was profitable for them just to be, not even often taking the time to find new spaces. Some people to know where it's operating, and it'll get you beyond from the month to the full month, right? I think the mental health service part is being very important. Usually that falls under states, not the city and county, and I'd be completely for it. And just like I was telling you, Ikaka, if you want to work on that bill, very happy to. My day job is I'm the Public Affairs Director at the Y and A Coast Conference of Health Centers. So I love investing more in public health as a way to be sure and work on social development to help, working on like finding that. But in this way, we're just finding people that we know, know that there's operating of illegal facilities on it. And just using leveraging fines and administrative penalties in addition to the already laws.
We have one more person. Janelle?
Hi, this is Janelle, Councilmember Se's office. I just wanted to answer a couple of questions that I heard. First of all, to Ikaka, that's a great idea as far as trying to get legislation on that. It's my understanding that the intent behind these bills and one of the issues that we're having and why we haven't heard it yet. Is because it's putting the criminal aspect into the building code. And so when you mix the civil and criminal, there can be some issues. But the reason that it even went into the building code in the first place is because a lot of these illegal gaming rooms have common building code violations. And so it's my understanding that DPP is currently already doing this. When they are able to go be part of the, the search warrant. Or once the police officers find that there are building code violations. And I think what these bills are intending to do is make that, make that bridge a little bit easier for DPP to be called in. As well as to, as Ian mentioned, allow for HPD to also find inspection violations. The other issue, though, is that if HPD, HPD can already do zoning violations, but it goes in as a criminal offense and not as a civil offense. And so those are some of the things that we're trying to work out. And Ian, we're totally happy to work with you on this. But I don't know if we're child trafficking, if there's, if there are common, common building code violations. That would be able to trigger that. But I think one of the other, the other agencies that we really need to work with is the Prosecutor's Office to be able to get DPP in, into those spaces to, to write up the violations as well. Just wanted to give my two cents and what we've discussed with DPP so far and what some of the issues we see are. But I love the out of the box thinking and different ways to tackle these problems. So thank you.
I was, thank you very much, Janelle, Chair. I'll just say briefly, while I like Ikaka's enthusiasm, I would apply it for some other bill. I wasn't necessarily saying we would tack on to this.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Motion to adopt from last month's meeting? As it is? Is that okay with everyone?
I just have a question. For the next regular meeting, I thought there was a request at the last meeting for us to see if we could put a different location for the meeting. Just because it's often, you know, there's other activities going on at the same time as this meeting. It's hard for the audience to hear.
We talked about that and then it seemed like it was voted down. It was never.
Yeah, so I know that Paul had mentioned that previously about looking into different locations. But the way I understood it, it didn't sound like there was a ton of interest. So Paul never put it back on the agenda. So for something like that, all you would need to do is talk to Paul and get it put on next month's agenda. And then you guys can consider a different location.
Great, then we put it on for next. I'll move down.
And where were we? Were you, motion to adopt the, in its, last meeting? Anybody second it? One second? Let's do a vote. Give your vote, Paul.
Okay, the motion is to adopt the, in summary, for video record, the minutes from last meeting as written. Alred? Barber? And if you guys can talk on the mic. Deval? Bilbes? Aldera?
Aye.
Chuck? Kim? Bowler?
Yes.
Lee? Audrey?
Aye.
Solis?
Yes.
Solomon?
Aye.
Everybody?
Aye.
Motion is adopted with 10 ayes, no noes, and no abstentions.
Okay, next we're going to elect officials. Okay, Councilmember Dalvin Say.
Hi, this is Andrew from Councilmember Se's office. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for, one second. Yeah, I'll be presenting the updates tonight. The City, the City's Office of Climate Change, Sustainability and Resiliency will conduct food risk surveys for households in high flood risk areas. The survey seeks to better understand residents, awareness of flood risk, knowledge of flood insurance and experiences with flooding events. Households that are in high flood risk areas will be receiving a postcard in the mail. But all Oahu residents can complete the online survey from March 11th to April 1st. I've put the link in the chat as well. Throughout the last month, we've received concerns about homeless near Old Stadium Park. Enforcement was scheduled and completed on February 6th by DFM and HPD. It was reported back to us that all encampments and personal property violating the ordinance along the sections of South King Street were removed by their owners from our, from our continued monitoring of the surrounding sidewalks at Old Stadium Park, Old Stadium Park Pavilion, Moiliili Triangle Park nearby. It's been clear of homeless and homeless property since then. There was also homeless concerns about homeless individuals living in Makiki Stream specifically by Poonho Gardens. And we put in a service request for the area with DFM and will continue to follow up with them. Lastly, we received concerns of overgrowth and maintenance requests for the entirety of Houston Ditch. Our office has put in multiple requests with, for Houston Ditch and will continue to follow up with DFM. They confirmed that they have multiple service requests for Houston Ditch for maintenance. And crews will be dispatched as resources are available. Other than that, that's all for me. If there's any questions, comments, concerns, I'll be happy to forward them to Councilmember Se.
Any questions for Councilmember?
Laura? Okay, two quick questions. First of all, it's no longer called the Houston Ditch. I had it changed. It's official now, it's the Ala Nayo Stream. Okay, so please make your adjustments. Second of all, will you please take the $63 million or whatever is apportioned for the city and county? Will you take it out of the proposed bridge over the canal? Please. Ask Councilmember Se to do that. It's the least he can do after he's went contrary to what was there. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Representative Andrew Garrett?
Good evening, Chair, members of the board. Great to be here. I know it's a few hours into the meeting already, so I'll try to keep this brief and not steal the thunder of my colleagues. Today was a major milestone for us. It was the first crossover. So for those of you who don't know, that means basically all the House bills that have been passed are going to cross over to the Senate and vice versa. The Senate will send us their bills. I believe the House passed about 450 bills at this point and the Senate passed about 320. So that's clear proof that the House works much harder than the Senate. Just kidding, senators, please don't kill my bills. But just wanted to point out that, you know, this session, it is really tough because of the financial situation, as you can understand, related to the Maui recovery. We're looking at potentially a $600 million shortfall just for this fiscal year, closing June 30th. So we're looking at, you know, everything being on the table in terms of how to balance our budget. In addition to the $600 million for Maui, we are looking at potentially anywhere from $350 to $400 million in back pay for, hazard pay for COVID, for state workers. The legislature's role in that settlement, if it is agreed to, is basically to either fund it or not. So, you know, it's not our job to try to negotiate a better deal or whatnot. So we'll see what the administration comes up with on that. There are some high profile bills that are moving through, some things that, you know, we discussed last year. I think clean, clean elections or what's known as clean elections, the publicly financed campaign bill is coming over to the House or has come over. The Senate also did send us a bill to legalize recreational marijuana for adults. So we'll see what happens in the House on that. I'm not sure if the votes are there, but, you know, we'll see what happens. For those of you who live in District 22, just as a reminder, it's everywhere on Maoka of Baritania Street. So if folks live in the Makali Moiliili area, like along Young Street or Baritania, you'll be receiving my newsletter in the next couple of weeks here with a mid-session report highlighting all the major bills that are still in play at this point. So with that, I'll stop and see if there are any questions at this. with that, I'll stop and see if there are any questions at this point.
Any questions? No? Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you. See you next month.
Kelly.
Uh, yes, thank you. I just wanted to thank, uh, Rep, Rep Garrett for, um, voting against HB 1630. So thank you very much for voting against that.
Oh, it was my pleasure. Thank you, Kelly, for mentioning that. Um, I will note that my colleague, Representative Nishimoto, voted no on that as well. For those of you who don't know, this is a bill relating to urban development. You know, we all agree that we have a need to, um, bring additional housing units online. But what this bill does, and I believe the Senate counterpart is Senate Bill 3202, which passed the Senate as well, is would basically allow any single family homeowner to build up to three lots. So we're talking about kind of the ADU, um, allowances on steroids. So a lot of us who represent urban districts are really concerned about what this would mean to the fabric of our community in, you know, in established neighborhoods. So we'll continue to vote no and try to educate our colleagues on the ramifications of that bill. So thank you, Kelly, for mentioning that.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Um, Representative Adrian Tanner. Scott Nishimoto first.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, thank you, Board and Community Directors. Good evening. Uh, I will be brief. I just have one announcement. Uh, my free tax preparation clinic, um, is happening this Saturday at the State Capitol from nine to one o'clock. Uh, appointments are required. Um, so if you'd like to, um, get an appointment, please give my office a call. Again, that's this Saturday from nine to one o'clock, Free Tax Preparation Clinic, uh, which we do every year. And I am available for questions.
Again, any questions? Representative? No, then thank you very much. We'll see you next, next month.
Thank you.
Next, Representative Adrian Town.
Uh, hi, everyone. Thanks for having me here today. Um, just have one announcement. We're, um, Representative Nishimoto, um, Speaker Psyki, and Senator Morawaki and I will be hosting a town hall uh, March 12th regarding condominium insurance rates going up. Um, if you would like to attend, it's at McKinley High School. And, um, let me pull up the, the thing. It's at McKinley High School from, uh, 5:30 and will end, um, when we end. And, um, we will be inviting experts in the insurance field to come and discuss those issues on condominiums, because as we know, you know, insurance rates are skyrocketing for condominiums and mainly because of, um, uh, um, deterioration. Uh, I'll just stop right there. I'm trying to still upload my newsletter for everyone. It's not on my website, but it'll be up. But there you go. That's my report.
Any questions?
What was the date of that meeting at McKinley High School?
Oh, yeah, uh, it's March 12th. At McKinley High School at 5:30 PM.
Thank you.
Darren.
Uh, yes, Adrian, is there any chance that the, um, that the, uh, town hall would be video uh, on, on video somehow for people who can't attend?
I can try to see. Oh, yeah, I can try to see if, um, we can get a video of that. Um, if it's well attended, I'm pretty sure we might do another one at a different date to accommodate everyone. I know that, um, places elsewhere other than, um, our area is concerned about kind of, um, insurance rates going up, so I know that there's been a lot of interest.
Thank you.
Ray.
Thank you, Chair. Hi, Rep Tam. Um, just have a question. The Aloha White Bridge seems to be a very contentious subject, and we had another resolution that was heard earlier. If you were on the Zoom, I'm not sure if you heard that, but there was another attempt to get a full EIS, um, adopted. And that didn't pass this evening. So we've got the Diamond Head Board that's actually adopted a full EIS requirement. We've got the Waikiki Neighborhood Board where I'm trying to get something adopted which just supports a bridge, but supports if a full EIS is required by law, that we support that. And because the Aloha White Bridge has such a substantial impact to the community, uh, there's a lot of money involved. There's an environmental impact that's substantial, and because I also feel that a full EIS is required. What I'd like to ask of you and Senator Morawaki, and I'll, I'll ask, I think, um, Charles is going to be here tonight, but I will ask if you and Senator Morawaki would participate in a meeting with, um, Ms. Ruby, Laura Ruby, and Professor Manirby, and myself. So we could discuss the possibilities of looking at the legal requirements. There's an environmental court that was established in Hawaii. And, you know, I have real concerns about where this is headed, and I don't want it to head in that direction, so I'd like it to be an open, fair discussion. So if you're open to that, I, I don't know if you could tell me right now this evening, if you're open to that, that would be great. And if we can move forward with something like that and set something up. I know you got, you guys are busy with the legislative session, but we'll have to find an opportunity for maybe even if it's 30 minutes that we could meet with you. Ak, would you be open to that?
My office has an open door policy where you are able to schedule an appointment with me anytime. Um, I saw, um, Ms. Ruby last night. Um, as everyone knows, I am very approachable and, um, you can feel free to schedule an appointment with me.
Excellent. We'll, we'll reach out and I'll try to coordinate something with, with, um, Laura and with Professor Manirby. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions? One question.
Uh, just, uh, just a comment for Rep Tam's, uh, uh, to consider, uh, I don't know that the bridge is contentious. I think there are three people who hate the bridge. And they take up a lot of time with their intent for the bridge. Uh, but I don't think that they speak for the broader community. The, the bridge has the support of tens of thousands of people who are going to enjoy it. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, like I said, um, I do have an open door policy in my office and, um, you know, anyone is free to come to my office and express how their views are. Including bridge supporters.
Anybody else? Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone. Aloha.
Next we have. Good evening. I'm, uh, less, you know, changing. More, maybe. Um, I go toward Makali, uh, One Street. Uh, Diamond. We're in the 27th day of the session, so we're about, um, almost halfway. Um, we have about 200 bills passed on its side. I'm on the referral committee, so my eyes a little blurry. I spent 300 bills or at least instructions, and we gave that, we referred them to various committees to make sure that they have adequate review. And now there are four weeks from tomorrow, I mean, that, that the Senate has to review the House bills, and the House bills, House has four weeks to review the Senate. So we're narrowing down bills, which deadlines will go along, and, uh, here's the, the most contentious or biggest thing was that vote on University of Hawaii, um, um, Board of Regional Chair, actually. And, uh, seeing even though I voted for the chair, I, um, I gave a speech and gave a history about, um, how University of Hawaii really is, um, was set up. Uh, from the Constitutional Convention in 1978, uh, which I was at, through, um, various economic summits and, and collaborators at University of Hawaii. We see that, uh, university as a, uh, as economic engine for Hawaii. It's one of the economic engines. I should, um, maybe I'll address the, what people should be talking about, about the bridge. On September, was it 20? I figured it was up in September, we had a meeting. Um, and it was, um, I think a 94% of everyone there was opposed to the 180 foot bridge. And I consider that a community consensus. We may, uh, differ in media, have different definitions, but in my line of work, and I do a lot of work in the community and nationally, uh, you would call that a community consensus. And how we know is if you pull another set of 150 people or so from the Malka, I'm talking about the Malka Aloha. I, I believe the, the Makai, um, uh, side may be okay. I don't know about that percentage of area. Um, but, um, and I think, uh, the big, big change is that that area used to be against the bridge all my uh, and the big news was that half of the people were open to the bridge. Not the 180, which was, um, almost, you know, almost entirely everybody doesn't mind. Um, and anyway, so I have, um, I am, have accepted a request to find an attorney in preparation of a possible Fonzie, which is, what's next is a, a environmental, a final environmental assessment. And that will say, and if they say that, uh, the, that the environmental assessment is adequate, that's the issue. Is an environmental assessment adequate? Because if it is, then why do an EIS, right? And so the issue is, is it adequate or not? And I have not, I have not been any concerned at all about the bridge, not had any because, um, the, the, uh, city did not ask for the communities, mouth the community, did not ask for the input. It did not inquire as to the impact of the census community of that area have with regard to the Diamond Head Special District. Um, I'm, I used to represent Waikiki, and I'm very familiar with that in the special district. Had long conversations with John Weyman about how it came about and how, um, the politics about it and all of that. And, uh, so the, the city would have to say that, um, that the, uh, three things. That the impact of the anticipated change, because they would have to get an exemption. Then this, it's, uh, it's right now, it's, you can't build. That, that's why you have corridors all around. And that area is in this. Uh, so I assume that they're going to say that we're going to the city or the council actually would, would approve an exemption or whatever it called. I went through the details of John Weyman. If, um, if, and actually Waikiki Shell might be the same thing. Waikiki Shell is within the Diamond Head Special District. Uh, and years back, there was attempts to build up, and it was failed because it's in the distance. So anyway, that is an issue, and that was not the step, um, that was not, um, dealt into. Uh, and that would be one of the objections. Now, if they did, they could still go ahead, but I wish they did it. But they, they did not include that in the environmental census. The one, two is that, um, that the impacts on the historic nature of the, of the canoe, was a canoe there, and, um, that, um, I believe they would need to get a, an environmental, I believe that they would need to get an, um, memorandum of agreement from the, those affect to say that, um, we don't need any EIS. We have enough information with which to determine that, uh, EA, EA is adequate, and we have enough information with which to say that the proposed mitigations are adequate. So that's and the third is that, um, the Aloha White Canal is a, um, historic, uh, on the historic register. Aloha White Canal, uh, went through, it's like a, it's, it's a historic artifact that saw Hawaii turn from an indigenous O'Koa system to the, um, the, um, call it, um, the missionaries and so forth, um, and, and also the overthrow. And so it went, it was there, it, so it was, it, it seemed the, the state or the territory moved from, it's the, the day is saw Hawaii, the Waikiki, um, become a prominent, prominent in the global mindset. I mean, to and our, and so the, the canal self is like an artifact. I consider it, um, it's like if you have a sacred, uh, like a a wall, it's like, you know, you know, door in a wall. And, and so, and it, I'm, I respect however way a, a judge or anyone might decide it. Um, I think that, um, the issue here is that, that we have enough information with which to make a good or bad decision, and, and that's not my call. Whoever decides the decision, they, they, they decide that. But my interest is in making sure they have the information we need in order for the authorities to make best decision possible. That's my stance on this.
Senator, excuse me, I would, I did attend the meeting that you referenced, um, where you said, uh, all of the attendees were against
94%.
Yeah, so, so I, I'm in favor of the bridge, and most, many of the people that I talked to at that meeting also in favor, I don't, I don't think that, but it's fully accurate. You wouldn't say that
Can I give you the evidence of that?
That sign the petition owed of tens of thousands, maybe 50 or 60 in half, they, they don't have access to this. Less than 100 is necessarily whatever. I'm not sure.
Well, I will, I will, I will provide you with information. We had five questions. 180 foot? Yes or no? Bridge, lower bridge, yes or no?
The city both takes
Well, I, I have the, I conducted the meeting, right? So I have all the data. So I'll give you the actual story. The actual, I'll give you the actual materials to show that I'm telling you what I'm telling you is and I'm willing to have it, I may need to be wrong about it.
But that's a meeting. I was just saying, I think that this was around 110, so I don't
Oh, well, no, no, 117. No, yeah, I have, yeah.
Not 110.
No, that was, I had another meeting. Yeah, no, it's 117. So. And I respect your wanting to have a bridge, and I can see, you know, so anyway, that's not a problem. Are there any questions? No? Once, twice?
Chair, uh, from the, the Zoom, I have a question if I could.
Of course.
Thank you. I, um, Craig mistaken, a Senator, uh, yeah, I just wanted to thank you very much for what you just did and, and, um, providing some factual information, which is important to this discussion. So when we have the facts, we, we get into a better place. Uh, and I want to offer my services, and I, I didn't include your name because I knew you were supportive of, um, doing the right thing for this issue. But if we could maybe get together, all of us, I'm, I'm offering my time to get together with Senator Morawaki, Representative Tam in your office, and have a little bit of a sit down, and, and I'm willing to do whatever it takes. Um, I'd like, obviously, the the various, uh, chapters and, um, you know, the laws that govern what's required for envi- environmental studies or environmental regulations to be looked at. So we've got Chapters 341, 343, 344, uh, multiple things, HR, HAR, the guidelines, um, with, within the the guidebook on the Office of Environmental Quality Control. Many, many things to look at. That's my forte. I'm very good with documents, engineering things. I, I come from the defense electronics industry, and I have a little bit of knowledge on legal issues. And so I would love to help address this so we can give the facts to the community. And at the end of the day, I believe this is going to end up in environmental court if that is the right venue. And if there's any assistance needed, we have an attorney also on Kukua Council that may be interested in this. Um, I don't know to take it on as a pro bono, but we can look at that later. I'm not speaking on behalf of Kukua Council, but that attorney may be interested. So, uh, if you're open to that, I'll, I'll reach out also to your office staff and we can
Well, I have one interest now. I've been busy in that, it's in a session, so that's all. On this one, I have one interest. Uh, and that one interest is, uh, having, um, adequate information with which the authorities can with which the authorities can make the decision. I'm not, I don't want to take a position about for or against the bridge itself.
Correct. Same here. And, and I, um, I am actually for a bridge that's a modest bridge. I'm not against a bridge. I'm just against the very large project. Um, so I, my thing is getting you the data that you need, so I could do some pro bono research. I'm not an attorney, but I'm very good at research, and I've, I've already put some time into this. So I'll leave it there so we can move on with the meeting.
Well, the next, then, the, the information will come from the city. So I'm not going to do anything. It's their job to do it. I hope they bet they do their good job.
Thank you for your time.
Senator Fukunaga? Once, twice? Still twice? There.
Aloha.
We haven't, we have eight minutes.
Okay, in the interest of time, uh, I provided my, uh, report to the Makali Neighborhood Board earlier on some of the, um, bills that we recently voted on, and I guess to uh, answer Kelly's question, in the Senate, we had a companion to House Bill sixteen thirty, and both Senator Ihara and I, as well as some of our other urban legislators, voted against that bill. But we do have a lot of work to kind of convince our, uh, fellow legislators of the dangers of Senate Bill Three Two Oh Two and House Bill sixteen thirty. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? No? Thank you for staying awake with us.
Oh, I see one hand from Kelly.
Oh, there you go.
I just wanted to say a big mahalo to Senator Fukunaga and Senator, um, and, um, Senator Ihara. Thank you very much for voting against SB Thirty-two oh two.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you very much. Next, Senator Sharon Mor- Morawaki.
Hi, uh, Charles for Moriwaki. Uh, I posted our report, and if you have any questions, let me know.
Questions through the Senate. Only once, twice, three times. Thank you very much for staying awake with us.
Thank you.
Okay, next. President and Community Comments. Laura's been waiting off. Very, very good. We have six minutes.
Coming, coming next time will be a resolution against the, uh, University of Hawaii of wanting to, uh, push the College of Ed into the main campus and diminish the campus property and think about the future for the teachers. Um, second of all, um, I would like to have somebody on the board that would take over the M, uh, O, MPO um, position. All the other neighborhood boards have them, and they go, and that's why I gave you the cards, so you could put down, um, you know, questions that you have about a bad pothole or, or a bad blind corner. But the real thing that I wanted just to show you is, here are examples of modest bridges all over the world. Basically, this is, uh, Dublin and turning place. Uh, that's our Alanaio. We'll go back up. There's two more back up there. One more up. Okay, okay, there's, there is. Okay. Uh, that's unusual, but it's a, it's also another modest bridge, like the one from Dublin, and also, um, Dave Barber can comment on the one about the one over, um, and in Iowa City. They're all modest bridges. Do you think we would have had any trouble with a modest bridge? Do you think we would have, there they are right there. That's Alberta, um, Canada, Banff Bridge. Okay, and the other one is the, um, that's the, um, Iowa City that they took a picture of. These, we would not have had a problem with something like this. Why can't we have that? Also, the site was not chosen by the community. It was chosen by people who were planners or developers, and they had five different locations. The location that would have been best is down by the dog park or over on the golf course away from a residential community. But the main thing is, think about the low modest bridge. Tam, are you opposed to a low modest bridge? You know, Loella, are you opposed to a mo- low modest bridge? Yeah, okay. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Low modest bridge.
Thank you. Next, Housekeeping announcements. Next radio meeting is what, six thirty? Six thirty? Uh, future agenda items, three pressing items placed on the next meeting agenda, please. This is my email address. The day before. Um, Loella Broadcast. Channel forty-nine, nine o'clock, Thursday, Monday, Sunday, Thursday. All the items picked up by the panel. Reporting near Earth issues. Got a hold of the you, uh, you made a